It is November 1st, 2016. The time now is 6:02. I am calling to order the Clemeth County Board of Commissioners in this scheduled Town Hall for this evening. Before we get started, I am going to lay out the ground rules so that we can all have a good evening here tonight. It's certainly nice to see all these faces, and I officially want a newborn room for Christmas so that we have more space for everyone. So, I apologize that our facility is not large enough probably to handle this big of a crowd. Please be patient with us, we're going to do the best we can. My goal is for us all to be congenial and work together this evening so that we get through this, and everybody has an opportunity to say their piece, but we do it in a way that's respectful, both to the people that are speaking and to my colleagues on board and myself. So, the way we're going to do this tonight is, we have taken, we have sign-up sheets, Sandy has hold of them, hopefully people have already had the opportunity to sign up. We will take, first, the people that want to testify in, or want to give comments for, then against, then neutral, and actually, prior to that, we'll take elected officials and other officials. Elected and other officials will have three minutes to speak, because we all know the electeds talk a lot longer than normal folk, and then everyone else will have two minutes. We are going to plan to end this meeting at nine o'clock, so that we can get everyone out of here. I'm sure it'll be plenty warm by then, and we'll all be ready to go. However, in a spirit of wanting everyone who comes this evening to be able to weigh in, I would like to suggest that if you have a comment that's very similar to what's been said by many other people, but you want to voice your support, when your name is called, you can just say, "I support," or "my comment's been said," or "I agree." The board will acknowledge that. That saves us some time. I know probably many of you have been to these types of things where there's a lot of repetition, and again, it's great for people to weigh in, but let's try to keep things moving along. As I mentioned earlier, I expect that everyone will be respectful and congenial. We really don't ever have a problem with that in this room, so I'm not anticipating that. The bad guy for this evening, or bad cop gets to be Commissioner Belay, who's going to be keeping the time. He will give you a 30-second warning, so after a minute and a half of speaking, you'll get the 30-second warning, and then you will get a hard stop. If we have to be really, really bad, I am capable of doing this, but I don't want to have to do that. So, let's just, you know, you don't have to stop mid-sentence, but please finish your sentence. Don't go on for another two minutes, or I will have to do this, and I don't want to. We have asked someone from Senator Merkley's office to give us a brief, hold on one second, to give us a brief five-minute overview before we get started. People in the hallway, if you can hear me, it's going to be challenging out there, and I understand, but try to be quiet. And additionally, after you've commented, if you're so inclined, it might be nice to step out and allow others to come in. That's up to you. We are going to do the Pledge of Allegiance before we get formally underway, but I wanted to get all those ground rules out of the way first. So, please join me in the pledge.
(Pleading) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And before Amy starts, I also should mention, for the record, and for folks who aren't familiar with our board, I'm Commissioner Kelly Munti-Morris, this is my colleague, Commissioner Tom Mallon, and Commissioner Jim Belay, who serves as our board's vice chair. So, with that, like I said, I asked Amy to give maybe a five-minute short explanation on the proposal. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Can you hear me? Is that working? So, my name is Amy Amron. I am Senator Jeff Merkley, Senator Oregon, Bill Representative, representing him to constituents and constituents to him. Thank you for having me, and for the opportunity to say a few words on behalf of Senator Merkley. As you all know, the Cascade-Siskiess National Monument was established in June 2000 by President Bill Clinton. Managed by the Bureau of Land Management, the Cascade-Siskiess National Monument is known as the first monument to biodiversity because of the remarkable variety of plant and animal species it hosts in one relatively small geographic area. The monument area is also an important biological connectivity corridor noted in the 1994 Northwest Forest Plan between the botanically world-class Cascade-Siskiess Bioregion and the southern Cascade Range. The current monument consists of about 66,000 acres. Private land within the monument's outer boundary remains private land, with building and development conditions subject only to county ordinances and state land use law. Only federal public land is monument land. That will also be true of any expansion. I would like to describe what is being considered in terms of the map and potential management, and then describe the process and the opportunities for public input. First, Senator Merkley asked me to make it clear that the decision on whether to expand the monument, and what the boundary lines would be, is by no means a done deal. The map reflects a first draft of the possible expansion that he and Senator Wyden put forth to kickstart conversations and debate. We will make sure that the results of those conversations are shared with the administration in the final call that's the president's to make. The maps are based on a range of policy and management proposals that have been in the public sphere for at least for the last several years. These include ONC management legislation introduced about two years ago, and BLM's latest Western Oregon Plan Division. In addition, we looked at recommendations from scientists on how to best protect the area. Climate change was an important factor in the recommendations. By covering more of the areas that species use for migration between two different areas, and by covering a wider range of lower and higher elevations, we can better get ahead of how species might move and shift in response to climate change. Protecting these habitats is potentially a conservation tool for keeping more species from being listed under the Endangered Species Act. Let me make one other important note about the map. The Bureau of Reclamation Lands surrounding and including Howard Prairie Reservoir, many of them leased by Jackson County for recreation purposes, are not part of the proposed monument expansion. In terms of how many, in terms of how any potential monument expansion would be managed, there are a few key things to note. First, if there is an expansion, the details will be decided in a management plan which would go through a public comment and review process. Second, it's important to note that monument management is more flexible than many other conservation designations such as wilderness. For example, in the current monument, timber harvest projects aiming at forest restoration or for public safety reasons are allowed. I would also note that there has been a lot of conservation, excuse me, conversation about grazing allotments in the monument. The BLM did not cut off any grazing allotments in the monument, but some were retired after conservation groups negotiated to buy leases from willing sellers. We welcome input on how that process went, and how it should work if the monument is expanded. I'll also describe briefly the process this goes through and the opportunities for input. As people probably know, the decision on whether to expand the monument is the president's to make. To ensure that, to ensure there would be opportunity for public comment, Senators Wyden and Merkley jointly sent a letter to the Department of Interior Secretary Sally Jewell, encouraging her to, quote, "hold a public meeting and consider expanding the boundaries of the monument," end quote. And Senator Merkley and Senator Boxer followed that letter, with one specifically asking for a public hearing on October 14th. Over 500 people attended that meeting with Deputy Secretary of Interior. Senator Merkley is glad that both Clemeth and Jackson Counties have helped solicit further public input. Last week, Jackson County hosted another public, hosted a public meeting where approximately 400 people attended, and it looks like we probably have at least another 150 or 200 people here tonight. Given the significant ancestral and cultural connections to these lands, it is also important that any expansion of the monument include consultation with the impacted tribes here in Oregon and California, to ensure that we honor the connection to the land by highlighting the history and ensuring access to sacred cultural sites. In addition to these public meetings, we are accepting written comments through Senator Merkley's website and through email. Handouts with the specific directions about how to submit a written comment are on the front table, and the senators welcome your input and feedback. All comments will be forwarded to the administration to inform the president's decision. Senator Merkley looks forward to hearing your feedback and to continuing this conversation with everyone across Southern Oregon.
Thank you.
Was that within my plans?
Sure. I timed it, I'm really grateful. Thank you. So, a couple of other notes that I should have mentioned earlier. This is an opportunity for our board simply to hear from you. Our board will not be deliberating as to what direction we are going to go. We certainly will give this some, we need some time to reflect on what we hear this evening, so we will not be deliberating. And with that, we will start with the elected officials. I'm going to read probably two or three names at a time, so people can get on deck, so to speak, in order to move things through more quickly. So, we're going to start with electeds, other officials, and even some candidates snuck in on this list. So, we start with Dennis Lenthikum, followed by Steve Ritchie, and then Colleen Roberts. So, Dennis.
Honest Injun, I asked if I should be on that or not, and they said, "Sure, go ahead." So, thank you, commissioners, for allowing. My name is Dennis Lenthikum. I'm the Republican candidate for Senate District 28, which is right here. It includes Jackson County, part of Jackson County, Clemeth County, parts of Lake County, and Deschutes, and all of Croup County. And I am here tonight to express opposition to this federal land grab, and to argue for local control. Local control and economics need to play a more vital role to how Clemeth County, Jackson County, and Southern Oregon manage their forest industries. All of the roads that we use to get in and out of the forests for hunting, for firewood cutting, for hiking, and for enjoying the wilderness areas that surround us here in Oregon, all were built, they were all cut, graded, rocked, and gravelled and maintained because of the prosperous economy that comes with forest products. Forest products is, was, the gold mine that produced all of the freedom that we enjoy. As we talk about expanding the monument, what we're talking about is limiting access for the public. As we limit access for the public, fewer people will be there, fewer economic benefits will derive from those lands, and harm will actually come to the surrounding communities. Without the economic incentives, you cannot make up the difference. To think that some young family camping and eating granola for breakfast is going to make up the economic steam engine that cut, gravelled, and graded those roads is silly. It only takes one fire, one lightning strike, in a monument area to create havoc for the rest of the area. We heard last week in Jackson County about butterflies, and birds, and wildlife that enjoyed living in the natural environment, but we've turned management on its head. Our stewardship model is upside down. If we're not going to use our management tools, our wisdom, our God-created ability to think through these issues and solve problems, if we leave the forest to its natural self, to the chaos of nature, nothing but havoc will result in those lands, and it will only take one stray thunderbolt to create havoc there. You may remember the 100,000-acre Berry Point Fire, and how that timber has, because of the NEPA, EIS, and ERR requirements, that timber on forest federal land still has not been salvaged, or harvested, or replanted. While on the private forest area, it has all been accomplished and with great success. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Steve Ritchie, followed by Colleen Roberts, and then Al Switzer.
Thank you, Steve Ritchie. I'm out of breath, literally just pulled in across the street. I'm from Ashland, Oregon. My name is Steve Ritchie. I'm a candidate for Oregon House District 5, and I'm opposed to the monument expansion. Ninety percent of the monument in the, well, almost 100% of the current monument, 90% of the expansion is all within my district. This expansion is much more about government's insatiable appetite for control than it is about science. As we learned last week, this is only a first step. Their sights are already set on the next meal, and they have even digested this one. I listened to a bunch of the testimony these past few weeks, and have a couple rhetorical questions for the proponents. I've told these lands are being destroyed by grazing and timber harvesting. My question is, if these lands are already under federal management, why are federal managers so inept as to allow overgrazing and poor forest management? Is it not their responsibility to monitor the lands they manage? And if these lands are locked away in a monument, why should we then believe they will be maintained in any better condition when the same federal managers still have jurisdiction? Second, let's talk about high property taxes and affordable housing. The lands in question are to be managed for multiple use. That means sustained yield timber harvesting and grazing leases, in addition to recreation and watershed protection. They are to provide a source of income for counties for services such as log enforcement and fire protection. They are to provide, excuse me. When counties don't get income from these lands to help support our communities, our property taxes go up, making housing more expensive. And where is the logic economically and environmentally in not harvesting timber in Southern Oregon, one of the most productive timber regions in the world, but importing building products from Canada, Brazil, Russia, and China? Does logging in those countries not contribute to climate change? Are you going to argue that Brazilian and Chinese loggers are better stored to the environment than Oregon timber companies? In closing, last week in Ashland, or last week in Medford, an Ashland teacher testified that the ONC Act passed in 1937 was an antiquated act, and therefore unworthy of respect. I'd just like to remind people about a few even more antiquated pieces of legislation still worthy of respect. In 1870, the 15th Amendment gave African Americans the right to vote. In 1920, the 19th Amendment gave women the right to vote. And finally, in 1933, the 21st Amendment ended prohibition, which is a good thing, because after this election, the whole country is going to need a good drink.
(Laughter) Colleen, and Al Switzer, and then followed by Grace Bennett.
Good evening. I'm Colleen Roberts, Jackson County Commissioner, and thank you for this time to speak, and I, like your board, our board hasn't been included in much of the planning process of what we're talking about tonight. And when they held the first public meeting by Senator Merkley's office, we found we weren't invited, kind of invited ourselves, so it shows, I found our county as a whole wasn't included, so that's why we had our public hearing, and got significant input from across the county. Written testimony brought in twice as much in opposition than in favor of the proposal. And we, our board deliberated, began deliberations today at our meeting, and discussing to affirm our opposition to the monument, based on the fact of the hearing results, a majority in opposition to it, and based on the local impacts to our counties, to our citizens, for wildfire protection, the fact that of the expansion, 51, about 51,000 of the acres are ONC land, and the ONC Act and the Antiquities Act, really, their management styles are in conflict with each other, which proposes a whole new argument that should be considered. And finally, the fact that we are concerned about the science. The science report, the science-based expansion, which I'm sure you'll hear about tonight, we have not seen a report, we've not seen the science, but I will tell you that in 2008, 2016, the BLM had environmental impact statements were done in conjunction with the United States Fish and Wildlife Service. Neither of these environmental impact statements identified issues that would warrant or recommend expansion of the monument as a solution. The federal agencies have collectively been studying these specific lands to develop a management strategy since 2005. Those efforts were done with full public disclosure, as NEPA requires, publishing the science that was considered, implications of alternative management approaches, and provided multiple opportunities for the public to provide input. In contrast, the very recent push to expand the monument has no comparable public disclosure of the implications of expanding the monument, and that sees implications that are concerning, I note, to our board with the majority of the land being in Jackson County. And I would like to follow up. Since our hearing, we've received a signed, an agreement of opposition from Senator Bertcherger, Senator Doug Woodsett, Representative Sal Escobal, Representative Dwayne Stark, Representative Mike McLean, Representative Carl Wilson, and Representative Gail Woodsett, in support of an opposition for the expansion. And also, I didn't get to read it in our hearing, but the Association of Oregon Counties, District 4, wrote a letter in support of Jackson County's opposition to the Cascade-Siskiess National Monument expansion, and they represent all 36 counties represented in Oregon. So, there's a lot of things to consider that haven't been considered, and I just thank you for hosting the hearing tonight, and I'll give you a lot to deliberate on. Thank you.
Al Switzer, Grace Bennett, Warner Rushkey.
Good evening, commissioners, and thank you very much for putting this meeting on. Before I get into my prepared statement, I'd like to just mention that during my years as commissioner, I spent 14 years on the ONC Board of Directors, the last four on the Executive Committee. So, my remarks are going to be slanted towards the ONC portion of this, because that's probably what I know best. I do not believe the proposed expansion of the Cascade-Siskiess National Monument is in the best interest of the citizens of Clemeth County. The proposal of adding an additional 66,500 acres to the current 66,000-acre monument makes no sense for the economic well-being of the counties. In addition, the President of the United States has no authority to designate a national monument of the ONC lands. 50,900 of the proposed acres are ONC lands. It is also true that the administration of any lands within a national monument would be inconsistent with the utilization of the ONC lands as directed by an act of Congress. I quote from Public Lands News 102116, "It is well settled that where Congress has set aside land for a specific purpose, the president is without authority to reserve the lands for any other purpose inconsistent with that specified by Congress." The ONC is an act of Congress, 1937. The president cannot do this. This proposal had an adverse effect on timber sales, money which the counties use to fund essential public services. We have a policy of sustained yield management on the ONC lands. We need to keep it in place. We need to keep our forests working for us, and continue to keep people employed in the forest industry. And I might add, that is renewable forest industry. We also need Congress to take from the president, any president, the ability to create or add to any national monument. Some legislation has been introduced on this, but it needs to be finished. And I would, I would make one final mention. Senator Merkley was here not too long ago, and he was complimenting the people in Clemeth for digging out the hole we've been in. Well, this is just going to create a much bigger hole for us to try to dig out of. So, I think the senator needs to understand this is a two-way story. Thank you very much.
Grace Bennett, Warner Rushkey, Bill Adams.
My name's Grace Bennett. I'm Chair of the Siskiess County Board of Supervisors. Thank you very much for hosting this meeting this evening, and I have a few comments to make. I've been to Ashland, to their meeting there, and I've been to the Medford meeting. The Medford meeting was very interesting, because they said that all of the tribes were in agreement to have this monument. And in our area, the Shasta Nation has never been contacted, they've never been asked for any kind of comments on this, and they will be making comments. The Shasta Nation encompasses the area that the monument is currently in, and a large portion of Siskiess County. And their comments should be taken very, very seriously. Siskiess County was never contacted. There's 10,000 acres of this expansion that will be in Siskiess County. That's really, really upsetting when the initial monument was enlisted. There were two supervisors from Siskiess County that crashed the meeting, and said that Siskiess County does not want any monuments in Siskiess County, and that stood at that time. We want to use the land. That's what it's there for. The checkerboard effect that has private property in it is totally unrealistic to involve that in any kind of a monument. They, they talk about willing sellers. It's very interesting that people that are going to be in a monument area are all for it, and then three years later, they become willing sellers of either their property or grazing rights, because they've been augmented to exploit it, and told that they, the regulations do not fit their lifestyle anymore. Fire protection. As you well know, that there was a fire last year over the Oregon-California line, and if it had not been for the dams, Iron Gate, and Copco, there wouldn't have been enough water to, for the helicopters to put that fire out. That went into a portion of the monument. That's very, very important to us to have those there. So, I have some documents to get to you this evening. One is a letter from the Siskiess County Board. One is the rural cleansing of Idaho and Montana. I think that's very important for you to read. This, and a discussion paper that is an internal draft, not for release, of BLM management categories, and a letter from the American Forester Resource Council. So, I would like to give those to you, so you can study those.
Please, please give them to Sandy. Any documents go to Sandy. Thank you. We can crash our meeting anytime. Warner, Bill Adams, Don Gentry.
Hi, my name is Warner Rushkey from Millina, Oregon. I'm also the Republican Party nominee for State Representative 56, which is all of Southern Clemeth County and Lake County, Southern Lake County. Checks and balances, that's a phrase most of us were taught when we were in grade school, about how our government was different than all the rest in all of human history. No one branch could rule autonomously without the consent of the other two branches. Moreover, no level of government is autonomous without the consent of the other two levels of government. What are those levels? Federal, state, and the people. Yes, we as citizens are part of the government. Matter of fact, the government's purpose is to serve us, not the other way around. Our system of government is bottom-up, not top-down. However, here we stand, with one branch at one level of government telling the other branches in other levels of government what is going to happen. There are no checks, there are no balances. Oh, sure, we have a public hearing, but it could be 100 to 1 either way, or against today's monument expansion, and it will not matter. One individual acting like a king, not as a president, trumps all. This is not a representative republic. This is not bottom-up governance. This is not the ideal America and Americans should strive for. Instead, this is outsiders who do not live here, who do not work here, who do not vacation here, telling us how best to use our natural resources, or in this case, not use them. We must bow to the altar they set up and the power they wield, so that the environmental lobby groups can fill their campaign war chests with more money. To this, I say no. To this, I say enough. To this, I stand against the un-American overreach of the Antiquities Act, and all who use it to usurp the land of those who live here. If they want a monument so bad, let them start with 10 square miles around Pioneer Square in downtown Portland. Let them try that. Here I stand. Don't tread on me.
(Applause) Followed by Don Gentry.
Good evening, Bill Adams, a member of the Clemeth Falls City Council. I was opposed to the initial monument that was put in place, and I'm also opposed to adding more area to the monument. As somebody that's handicapped, makes it really hard to use land where you have to walk, and walk, and walk to get in there. I'm missing a leg, and I can, you know, I get around and walk, I work every day. I'm not on disability, but I don't walk five miles a day, there are 10 miles a day to go in and hunt, or to do something like that. To me, I look at this as more... As somebody that's handicapped, makes it really hard to use land where you have to walk and walk and walk to get in there. I'm missing a leg, and I can, you know, I get around and walk. I work every day. I'm not on disability, but I don't walk five miles a day or ten miles a day to go in and hunt or to do something like that. To me, I look at this as more rural cleansing, just, just like our water shut-offs have been. On top of this, it's taking away area that should be available for logging. And in reading a little of the, of the judicial decision in nineteen forty after the O N C timber legislation in nineteen thirty-seven, and what Mr. Switzer said earlier, I don't, I'm not really to understand how the government even thinks they can take this. Because any of that that's O N C lands has no business being, being used for anything other than sustainable timber production. From what sounds to things, it sounds like no local government was included in, in input, or they didn't want anybody's input in the local area. And I think your local officials are probably pretty in tune with the way the public feels about most of these things, but I don't think they wanted to hear from us. But I think they're going to. Thank you for putting this on, and I appreciate, appreciate being able to speak.
Yep, thanks, Don. Don Gentry.
Commissioners, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak in the absolute support of the expansion. This is out of the home territory of Clamath County, and we certainly have interests down there in maintaining the cultural uses and ecological values that the area provides. I believe in the forest, or actually the planning of the project as a design, there's opportunity to address, address fire risk, and there is opportunity for appropriate management to achieve the goals, the initial objectives of what the monument is established for. So I don't believe it's hands-off, and I think the jury's out as, as far as just what the positive or negative effects are on the economy of the region. I really believe expansion is important to more appropriately include the water, more of the watersheds that need to be protected for their values. Particularly concerned about Jenny Creek and unique species there, and impacts on water falling that may affect restoring fisheries, salmon and steelheads in the upper basin. And the tribes' traditional and even ongoing uses, spiritual purposes and cultural purposes, and I think are better protected with expanding the monument. So although it seems quite an minority here at this point, I believe these values and the unique area that this is needs to be protected. You know, I think we need to be more concerned about economic opportunity, though I do believe there is economic opportunity that's, that this area will provide. I believe that better protects the interest of the Clamath tribes, our uses in the future of the region, so thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. So we are now going to start to move into the public portion to testify for. As a reminder, everyone will have two minutes. However, before we make that transition, we have received some comments by other elected officials who couldn't be here this evening. My colleague, Commissioner Malums, has asked to read some of those for our benefit and for, for the benefit of everyone that's here. I have asked him to keep it to the salient points, just in the interest of time. He has promised to do that. We'll see.
I will do my best. This first letter is from, is signed by Representative Rob Bishop from Utah, Representative Tom Twente from California, Representative Greg Walton from Oregon, and Representative Doug LaMoffa from California. It has come to our attention that a number of national monument designations being considered by our administration could exacerbate ongoing crises related to western drought and wildfires. In California, above other things, a proposed Sierra Nevada National Monument has been proposed. Fifteen water districts and almost a million acres of irrigated agricultural lands are at risk. In Oregon, the areas include vast acreage at high risk of catastrophic wildfires and in need of treatment. Further, the proposed expansion priority includes O N C lands, which Congress provided for permanent forest production under the O N C lands Act, Public Law seventy-five dash four oh five. The Association of O N C Counties recently brought these concerns, among others, to retention of the Department of the Interior. Concluding on this, a very brief part of this says, rather than act on these designations and make matters worse, we call upon you and your administration to work with these communities and Congress to alleviate federal barriers to greater forest health and water abundance. Second letter I got, I think someone already referenced this, I think at Colleen's, did that, will you? It's signed by Senator Herman Datchiger, Senator Doug Woodsett, Representative Mike McLean, Representative Sal Esposito, Representative Carl Wilson, Representative Blount Star, and Representative Gail Whitson from the State House. As elected legislators representing Southern Oregon, we are invited to express our concerns with the proposed expansion of the Cascade-Siski National Monument through the Federal Antiquities Act. While we appreciate the Deputy Secretary's visit, his passion to discuss the proposed expansion, it is disappointing that many citizens did not learn about your meeting until after it happened. Public support for this proposal is not as widespread as proponents have suggested, especially as more citizens begin to learn of the expansion and how it would affect them. The monument expansion will further threaten ranching and our vulnerable forest products' infrastructure in Southern Oregon. Rather than expanding the national monument, we would specifically respectfully encourage the Obama administration and our congressional delegation to focus on comprehensive forest management legislation for Southern Oregon, including restoring sustainable timber harvests on the O N C lands. In closing, we do not believe expanding the Cascade-Siski National Monument, especially through the Antiquities Act, at the end of President Obama's administration, is the best solution for protecting these lands. We believe our citizens would be better served by having this proposal considered and voted upon by their elected representatives in Congress. The final one I have is, actually two, I've got two more, we'll shorten these. This is from Commissioner Jay Volcivovich from Lake County. No new monuments, wilderness, or wildlife refuges anywhere. No more closures of public lands to the public. Return federal lands back to the states and the people as promised under statehood. Thanks, Jay. The last one I have is from our Clamath County Chamber of Commerce. The Board of Clamath County Chamber of Commerce voted October twentieth of twenty sixteen to oppose a proposed expansion that would nearly double the size of the Cascade-Siski National Monument, citing the impact on the local economy. Twenty seventeen, Chamber Board President-elect Wes Franchetti disagrees with this monument. Our community hasn't been given an opportunity to voice concerns or opposition to the proposal. We believe this proposal should be withdrawn. The Clamath County Chamber of Commerce has served the Clamath County since nineteen oh five. It is a member-based organization made of businesses and individuals who work together with the Chamber to advance the civic, economic, industrial, professional, and cultural life of our county.
Thank you, Commissioner. So as we move into those who have signed up to make comments supporting, a reminder to everyone that if the comment that you're planning to make gets said, or gets said multiple times, it is perfectly okay to just say, when I call your name, I support, or I'm opposed, or I'm neutral, I'm just happy to be here, or something like that, and...
You want the cookies that we provide.
Or, yeah, cookies, or you butchered my name, which I will really try not to do, but please bear with me if I do. So same scenario too, I'm going to call about three names at once, so people can be waiting, and we'll keep this moving along. So we'll start with Dermot McGuire, followed by Deb Evans, and then Ron Schopf.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Dermot McGuire. I am the owner and operator of Green Springs Inn, and I see some familiar faces in this room, because I believe I've served breakfast to a number of these people here. I'm coming because the monument is very important to me. I'm in holding, I think I'm probably one of the few people in this room that actually lives and works inside the boundaries of the Cascade-Siski National Monument as it currently exists. And I'm here to tell you, number one, that the establishment of the monument, which was now sixteen years ago, did not seriously affect my ability to operate my business or the ability of my neighbors to live their lives. The rules that I operated under prior to the monument in terms of operating and developing my business still apply, they're still applied by Jackson County, not the federal government. And that applies, that same principle is true for all, all in-hovers, all landowners within the monument's boundary. My, my customers that come to hunt and fish still come to hunt and fish. My neighbors who are ranchers still ranch, except for the ones that took the opportunity to accept buyout offers and retire. Buyout, those buyout, buyout offers might not have been available without the monument. So basically, the monument has not affected us negatively. On the other side of the coin, we have become known nationally now and internationally as a icon of environmental conservation. And we get visitors not only globally now, but from the West Coast, from the East Coast, from Japan, from Europe, who come to see what we're doing here. And if we actually make this monument in, a whole monument by making it intact, we'll get more of them. So it's an opportunity, not a threat. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Deb Evans, Ron Schopf, followed by Joseph Vale.
Hi, my name is Deb Evans. I'm a private property owner that lives on the edge of the current Cascade-Siski National Monument. My family owns five hundred and fifty acres of timber and high meadow habitat that would be included in the proposed monument expansion. We also own additional timber acreage in Clamath County, just north of where the expansion would be in, as the current map shows. Some of the reasons, and we are very strongly in favor of the monument, some of the reasons we are in favor of the monument expansion are, is that it does not affect people inside the monument. I think there's a misconception that private property would somehow be jeopardized. We are still able to do what we want to do with our land. We sustainably log. We also manage some areas for wildlife protection, and nothing of that changes. So that's one point I want to make. It's also good for the economy. And as Dermot referenced, you know, it's bringing people from way outside of our area to our area to hunt, to fish, to bird, to do research, and it's, it's, so that in our book is a good thing. It also is, if you expand the monument along ecological lines, it will allow management practices that will maximize an integral and contiguous habitat, something that will be needed to maintain diversity of species, and especially in the face of climate change. Many of us are already feeling the effects of climate change and increased temperature and drier summers. My immediate neighbor's spring for the first time in sixty years went dry last summer, forcing her to haul water to her home. The impacts of climate change are going to affect us all, creating a haven that protects water, flora, and fauna, sequesters carbon, and promotes practices that can lessen those impacts is critical. The Cascade-Siski National Monument expansion will give us a rare and needed opportunity to build climate resilience. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ron Schopf, Joseph Vale, followed by Jerry Lee Newby.
My name is Ron Schopf. I'm with her. I've managed the five hundred and fifty acres within the proposed boundary. We do it sustainably, I'm out there every day. So far, the twenty years we've been there, no effect from government on our impacts to what we do on our private property. Some of my best friends are against the monument, but we serve on school boards together. We've worked in foundations, we help each other in the fire and rescue. We'll disagree, but we'll be great friends forever, because we rely on each other. They log the same way I do, we're in for the same things, we just disagree on the politics. I'm in favor of the monument.
Thank you. Joseph Vale, Jerry Lee Newby, Janine Moy.
Yeah, my name is Joseph Vale. I just want to thank the Commission for your interest in the Cascade-Siski National Monument. I, I hope you support the conservation of this really special area. I have the pleasure of serving on the Southwest Oregon Resource Advisory Council with Commissioner Morris. This is a place where county commissioners, landowners, timber companies, tribes, and conservationists all sit down, and we talk about the best way to manage our public lands, the public lands that are owned by all Americans and our public trust waters. It is obvious to me that there, there are places that are special and need to be conserved, but there's also an opportunity for us to strike a balance between conservation and the economy. I think one of the areas is in protecting our special places, like the Cascade-Siski National Monument. While we know all the money that can be made from resource extraction, that's obvious, it is also time that we look at the conservation and recreation as a means to strengthen the economy. Let's take a look at Crater Lake National Park, it's a beautiful picture above you, Commissioners. Over fifty million dollars was brought into the local economy from visitation at Crater Lake this past year. This is a tremendous asset to the local community. When we look at other places, like the Elanlands in Western Oregon, we see recreation has become increasingly important for the local economy. Over a hundred and twenty million dollars in direct revenue was brought in from recreation on the Elanlands. The Cascade-Siski National Monument is on the map. I've taken kids up to the monument. I see just about everybody using the area, hunters, people driving the hundreds of miles of roads.
Thirty seconds.
The quads that people are riding on those roads, the hikers, people snowshoeing, skiing, backpacking, shooting, climbing, doing fuel reduction. The Pacific Crest Trail runs right through the national monument and the expansion area. By every measure, the Cascade-Siski National Monument is a success. Many of the neighbors love it. The Elan has brought more funding to manage the area. People use it, enjoy it, and the businesses have benefited from it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joseph. Jerry Lee Newby, Janine Moy, Dan Roper.
Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, Commissioners and fellow citizens. I've lived in Oregon since nineteen seventy-six, and I speak for the wild places. It has been over thirty years since we learned that our nation's old growth forests were ninety-five percent clear-cut, and timber interests besaring half of them are only five percent. Since nineteen ninety-four, I live inside the Cascade-Siski Monument. Science shows how vital it is to expand this unique area. I've dwelt in several states and lived in seven countries. I've traveled widely all over the world. Firsthand, I've witnessed a global view of wilderness, sustainably maintained in various nations, benefiting all life. We're aware that our forests help purify toxic air, create oxygen we need to live, besides many other things. We know great civilizations have perished as well, taking rather than balance receiving and giving back to life. National Geographic reported that the Sahara Desert was once a burdened forest, denuded by humanity. Hopefully, we will learn from our Native Americans, experts in sustainability for many centuries. We have a choice to continue business as usual towards our nation's decline, or live in balance, sustainably receiving and selflessly giving back to this awesome land and our earth home. So if this resonates, continue to express your support for this wonderful cascade expansion of the monument. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Janine Moy, Dan Roper, Dave Willis.
Can I ask a question before testifying here? I was wondering, with all the supporters going first, if anyone's late who's in support, will they still get to speak?
We have a hard cutoff at nine o'clock, so that's why we're trying to get through quickly.
Okay. Well, thanks for holding the meeting tonight. My name is Janine Moy, and I like to fish and ski and run and camp and go to the Green Springs Inn and boat and stand a paddleboard and probably a few other things on the monument. I was just much more hunting there last week. And I think that it is a tremendous resource for the, for our community, not only for the recreation dollars that have already been mentioned, but for the greater sustainability of our community and the natural world that is protected up there. There are several hundred students every year that go to the monument to experience nature, sometimes for their first time, and not only for the benefit of their scientific learning, but also for the benefit of their emotional, physical, even spiritual development. These are opportunities that they don't commonly get inside of the four walls that surround them. I've seen a lot of firsts for these children up there as a, someone who's... I've seen a lot of firsts for these children up there as someone who's guided them myself. And I wanted to dispel a couple of myths that have already been brought up tonight. It's alarming to me when people say land grab. It's a federal land grab because this land that we're talking about tonight is already managed by the BLM, and it is owned by all the public, all of us in this room, and it will continue to be owned by the public and managed by the BLM. The only thing is that this land is now free from being pillaged and damaged by extraction. And this is what's going to sustain us in the long run. The O and C Act is not going to make trees go faster, it's not going to make things sustain over time. And I just wanted to remind everyone, quoting the O and C Act, that it also includes protecting watersheds, regulating the stream flow, contributing to the economic stability of local communities and industries, and providing recreational facilities. There's a large body of science that has shown. All right, well, thank you for this opportunity. I'll submit more online. Thanks.
Dan Roper, Dave Willis, Stephen Jessup.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. I'm a bit of a stranger to the podium, but I'm going to do my best to say a few words in support of the monument expansion. I also want to echo the other thoughts about this not really being a land grab. This wasn't the BLM's idea. This was born out of a group of concerned citizens. If anything, I think we're just talking about a change in management, more emphasized conservation of biodiversity, recreation, watershed protection. And even though I support the monument, I'm not unsympathetic to the concerns of those who are opposed. I too have concerns about losing public access, and that's why I think it's so important that our public lands stay in public ownership. Some of you here tonight may think that these federal lands should be given to the states, and to me, I think that is the first step to privatization. I don't think there's a single other action that could lead to more road closures and more no trespassing signs than this. Taking these lands out of federal management would be the ultimate loss of public access. The BLM and Forest Service may sometimes close roads, but they hardly ever put up no trespassing signs. I also don't want for this expansion to create additional hardships for ranchers who are acting as good stewards of the land. But I think we need to acknowledge that there are bigger threats to ranchers and farmers out there than this monument expansion. I think the way we help local ranchers is by supporting them through our dollars, by paying more for sustainably raised Oregon products, and developing better agricultural policies.
Thirty seconds.
Not by opposing proposals like this one. An abundance of biological diversity is the main reason I support this monument, because there's no other place like it in the world in terms of its unique plant and animal life. I believe that we as a society have a responsibility to make sure that species don't go extinct on our watch. I think the Cascade Siskiess is deserving of a larger protected area in order to maybe we can do that. This place is unique to the world, but it's found in our own backyard. This monument may not be the perfect solution, but I think that supporting it is the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Willis, Stephen Jessup, John Velella.
I'd also like everybody to look at that picture behind the Commissioners and imagine maybe 100 years ago or so when people were opposing it, used that national park, using some of the same arguments. I live between Ashland and Keno on private land inside monument boundaries, in the climate through the watershed above Keen Creek and the Jenny Creek sub watershed. Seems like watershed boundaries don't line up with political boundaries that often, which is why the scientists' recommendations and Oregon senators have proposed expanding the monument, established to protect biodiversity, have BLM land in more than one county. The public land belonging to all Americans in Clamath County boundaries in the proposed monument expansion is mostly along the Surveille Mountain Buck Mountain Ridge and the headwaters of Jenny and Spencer Creeks. The scientists say this higher elevation forest is important for species refugia in the face of increasing climate change, especially considering what's been happening to nearby private commercial logging land for decades. All you have to do is look at Google Earth or go there to see what I mean by that. BLM's Western Oregon Plan Revision already designates a fair bit of the proposed expansion for less than timber production or more. And the senators' proposed O and C bill, whether it passes, who knows? We manage most of the area for conservation purposes. Last time I went to Crater Lake was one of Senator Wyden's forward-looking Recreation Economy listening sessions. A gentleman from the local tourist bureau in Clamath County was noting the economic boost tourism from Lavabed's National Monument helps in the Clamath Falls. He was recommending that Lavabed's become a national park for more economic benefit combined with Crater Lake. The Cascade Siskiess Monument has expanded. Clamath Falls is in the middle of two decent-sized monuments and Crater Lake. I think it would mean increased prosperity for Clamath Falls over the long haul, not a lot, but more each year, and I think it would mean a more diversified and prosperous Clamath County economy in the long run. And when somebody said that about Crater Lake 100 years ago, everybody thought they were joking.
Thank you. Stephen Jessup, John Velella, Michael Dotson.
Good evening. Thank you for staging this. I am Steve Jessup. I'm a career biologist.
Don't hold on to the mic. It causes a lot of problems. Everybody will take care of the mic.
Okay. Restart the clock.
Go ahead.
So my area of interest and study since very early in my life has been biodiversity science. I taught for 18 years at Southern Oregon University in the Biology Department, Earth Science, Environmental Studies Department. And I was here in a part of the conversation when the original monument was being deliberated, and it was clear, abundantly clear to scientists who were interested in this for its biodiversity value, that this area was more important for a larger group of people, for the value, enduring value of biodiversity than it was for the short-term interest of resource production. And in many cases, resource production in areas of the monument is not that great. It's not good cattle country. In fact, it's very bad cattle country. It's bad for the land. And timber harvest has been a huge weight on the land in terms of its functioning as an ecosystem. As an ecologist and evolutionary biologist, it makes very good sense to set this area aside for its enduring value to not just this generation, not just these people, but to a very long, a very large group of Americans. I'm a fourth-generation descendant of Cherokee Nation, and if there was a land grab, it was a land grab that occurred about four or five generations ago. And it has been used, the land has been used and grabbed and grabbed and grabbed by resource-hungry grabbers for too long, and some of the areas are showing the signs of ecological destruction and collapse. So this monument, I strongly support it. I think this is the best thing for not just this generation, but generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. John Velella, Michael Dotson, Allison Loughlin.
Hello, everybody, and thank you for listening to my comments. My name's John Velella, and I am also a Steve Jessup performer. I'm a biologist based in Jackson County, and I work with rare plant species around the Pacific Northwest, and I travel around from Alaska to Northern California, looking at different plant communities in these areas. And I just want to say that, in my opinion, the species that occur in this area are really unique, and I know there's been a lot of talk about process and those sorts of things, and that's not something that I have much of an expertise in, but I want to just speak for the species that occur in this area, and I believe that they should be protected, and I believe that the biodiversity of this area is really unique. I believe that in my experience working in the monument as a botanist and also recreating in that area, I feel like there is a lot of opportunities that are available for recreators and people to go out and visit these areas. I think that, based on what I understand from the proposal here, that there still will be access that will be allowed into these areas, and also, I feel like, sorry, I'm a little nervous. The access issues, I think, are maybe a little bit overblown because there's a lot of roads that are still available for people to travel and use in this area, and so I just wanted to speak on behalf of those species. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to do Michael Dotson, Allison Loughlin, and John Ward, a point of process, so that we're fair in that both sides get an opportunity to comment. We're going to go till 7:30 on those supporting, and then I'm going to give an hour and 15 minutes to those opposed, and then we'll go back and spend the last time. We'll try to divide it as evenly as we can.
Thank you. My name is Michael Dotson. I'm a resident of Jackson County. Thank you for having a local hearing on this event. I want to talk about the science available. If you go back to 1995, the Clamath Falls resource area, the existing maps were operated under, were created in 1995, and now those lands are listed for expansion in Cascade Siskiess and Clamath County. The local resource area defines them both as Tier One Key Watersheds and as Zone One Lands. A Tier One Key Watershed by definition has strong fish populations and habitat, are intended to serve as refugia for aquatic organisms, and have the greatest potential for restoration and provide sources of high water quality. Zone One Lands by definition are lands that best serve the management missions of the BLM by maintaining or enhancing important public values and uses. Lands in Zone One may include the following special management areas: research natural areas, areas of critical environmental concern, and National Landscape Conservation System Designated Lands. It is this last category where BLM national monuments fall. So there is science out there that predates the original proclamation, and so I appreciate you all, folks, for your public input, and I would like to support science-based expansion of the Cascade Siskiess National Monument.
Allison Loughlin, John Ward, Bob Given.
Hi, thank you for letting me get this down a little bit. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak and for people to listen. I appreciate it. I've lived 50 years in southern Oregon. I have an accent, so I have to say that. And I've worked in Clamath Falls as part of my career. This year, I turned 70, and to celebrate, I decided to go to seven national parks, just in the western part of the United States. And at each of them, I read the story of the citizens and the public servants and the politicians who had worked so hard to get this land as a national park, and I was thankful to all of them. Grand Canyon and Olympic National Park and many others started as monuments. Congress gave the presidents the Antiquities Act. Without the use of the Antiquities Act, we wouldn't have those national parks that had started as monuments. I've visited seven very beautiful national parks, but it was clear to me that none of them had the biodiversity of our monument. I mean, it is striking, the number of different types of trees, butterflies, flowers, confluence of three mountains, ranges. This is a national treasure in our backyard. I've hiked and skied and butterflyed and tracked and climbed through all these years, and I've also gone into the areas of expansion, probably monthly for the last 40 years. I saw the degradation years ago from overgrazing and logging in what was the Sota Mountain area. Prior to it becoming a monument, BLM may do a good job managing for multiple use, but further protection is needed to support the monument for protection and recovery. Hardly the chaos of nature, but well-matched monument. So I support science-based Cascade Siskiess Monument expansion. Thank you.
John Ward, Bob Given, Susie Given.
Hi, thanks very much for having me in Florida, Clamath County, to relate the monument. I'm John Ward, landowner, 47 years in the monument. So as I said, 31 years before the monument ever came to exist. My interest is raising cattle and managing the timberlands that I own. I think that we've worked closely with the Bureau of Land Management in trying to understand the complexities of some of the management issues, and as president of the Friendsland Greensprings, whose board supports the expansion, I want to say that I really strongly support the expansion. I think that over time, we've learned that the protection of the values for which the monument was created can easily be done within the limits that were, as it resulted. So some expansion is needed. I think it needs to be judged on a more scientific basis to try to understand the complexities and balance them with the boundaries that are established. That remains to be done. It's an unfinished project, but it still will go forward. My particular interest is watershed management, and particularly the headlands for Jenny Creek. I think that it's really important. Glad to see that the benefits would also come to other creeks that come off the hills up there. Livestock management is possible in the monument now, and I think that can continue where there are fellows that are willing to work as hard as it takes to manage cattle operation on a complex acreage. There is some limits imposed by transportation management plan, but it's still publicly accessible. I think it's important. Thank you.
Bob Given, Susie Given, Allison Kling.
Thank you for having us and holding this hearing. I'm Bob Given. We have 250 acres as an inholder surrounded by the national monument, and we would like to see expanded. First, I'd like to address Sue Pellese's letter to the editor of the Medford Mail Tribune. There are many misstatements in it. One is that Hobart Lake is a private lake. It is a real lake. Has many studies, including one several years ago by geologists at the University of Oregon, where they cored down 45 feet. And guess what? They found a layer of ash about an inch thick. I saw it myself. Came right from that lake behind you. So it has been proven to be a well-established lake. It is a natural lake. In-home land users, I've been approached by many at both hearings. They have a misunderstanding. They have all of the rights that I have. I can cut trees. I do cut trees. I do log. I can do anything on my land that is provided by law. I can run ATVs. As to cattle, if I have leases in the monument, I can run cattle in the leases in the monument. None of the leases, other than those who have chosen to be bought out, have been terminated. The BLM have renewed leases. So that is not a problem as to cattle, from my perspective. The other thing I'd like to address quickly is I am president of Greensprings World Fire District. I was on the Oregon Gulch Fire. That fire started not in the monument, but at 10- to 20-foot pond of rose and vines on private property. We respond to lightning strikes in the monument all the time, and we have dozers in there. Dozers weren't in there for the Oregon Gulch Fire. So it is not restricted from a fire protection standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you. Susie Given, Allison Kling, Bonnie Johnson.
Hi, I'm Susie Given, who loves carpentry and like. As we first came in here this evening, there was a man with a placard that said, "This is our land." It definitely is our land. We, as Americans, own and are stewards to this land. All sorts of people are using this land now, senior citizens, students coming up from the valley, from Medford and Ashland Schools, and talent, and, excuse me, I have white glasses on, just a part of age, and graduate students go up and do research from SOU. This land is also home to plant This land is also home to plants and animals. It's not just our human land, it's our everyone-on-the-planet land. It is a special place. It is the union of three different ecosystems. This doesn't happen very often. The PCT runs through the high altitudes through the monument, all the way from Mexico to the Canada border. And one of the reasons that the monument has as many different diverse plants and animals is because of the Clamath River. On that PCT, from Mexico to Canada, there are only three low-altitude places. The Mojave Desert, where all the trainings go back and forth, the Clamath River, and the Columbia River. That's it. Everything else is mountainous. So that's why it's such a special place. We need to protect our special place for Oregon's and for future Oregon's. I support the expansion of the monument.
Thank you. Allison Kling, Bonnie Johnson, Jim Bronson.
Hi, I'm Allison Kling. So, we bought property on the Green Springs almost 40 years ago. We live and we work in the monument, within the monument boundaries. We raised our family hiking and exploring all over that area, from the valley creeks to the mountain peaks. We're now finally building a house of our own on that land within the monument boundaries. It's our house, our land, and we're doing as we choose. The monument designation of surrounding federal lands does not impact our private land use. We've continued to hike and explore within the existing monument and in areas of the proposed expanded monument, which are all pretty spectacular. Just as we will put a roof on our new house to protect and secure the vulnerable and valuable contents of our home, so too, should a metaphorical roof be put on the monument, expanding wide enough to adequately protect and secure the treasures and unique characteristics within. So I strongly support the monument.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bonnie Johnson, Jim Bronson, Bruce Sargent.
Hello, my name's Bonnie Johnson, and I'm a Jackson County resident, and like some, I'm a 70-year-old piper who visits the monument regularly and appreciates its great wild and wonderful beauty. I've supported all of the diverse comments made so far, I just wanted to mention that I understand the fear of change when people have been living in this beautiful place for decades or generations, and you hate to think that something is going to impact the wonders of this place. But the testimony we've heard so far shows that landowners continue to do exactly what they want on their own land within the monument, they've only seen improvement, and businesses like the Greensprings Inn have only seen improvement. We're seeing benefits, all kinds of economic benefits, certainly aesthetic benefits. And the third thing to emphasize is the endemic species and the value of protecting these species we know so little about that only exist here. And scientific research that discovers things that are considered insignificant can turn out to be very significant, like the Pacific yew, famous story of the Pacific yew, which was considered this trash tree in the forest and they just burned it and decimated it, but it was the source of Taxol that became a successful treatment for cancer, really spurred amazing cancer research. And we don't know how many of these little plants and fungi and algae in our National Monument have the potential for this kind of research and benefit to mankind. Thank you for giving them a chance to survive.
Thank you. Jim Bronson, Bruce Sargent, Alan Hart-McArthur.
Hello, thank you very much. I will keep my comments briefer than I thought because so many have been said very well already, and I think you've been quite well informed about the scientific value and the emotional, cultural value and so forth. The one little image that I want to leave with you is of working with Boy Scouts, I've had the opportunity to bring Boy Scouts up into the monument. I live just below the Greensprings, and I can hike up to Buck Point and up to the Greensprings Mountain. And Boy Scouts have benefited a great deal from coming in there and picking up trash. And it's kind of an interesting dichotomy, where you don't want the trash, but on the other hand, it's been a wonderful learning opportunity for these guys, and several Eagle Scout awards have been made by people that have picked up 50 pounds of trash in their plastic bags and brought it out. And so I just want to say, it is a complex picture, it's evolving, and I think that what I'd like to leave with is just that for future generations, we need to keep evolving away from degradation and more toward protection and restoration. Thank you so much.
Bruce Sargent, Alan Hart-McArthur, Grace Stalkup.
Thank you for the opportunity. My wife and my family and I have been in the monument area since before it was a monument, 38 years, and we have a retreat facility that, when the monument was created, it enhanced our business. So we've heard plenty about how you can do whatever you want as private people within the monument, and that's been our experience. But I wanted to talk a little bit about, on the east side here, I don't think people, I'm sure you've been over in that country a little bit, but I don't think you really realize what we have in our backyard. It's one of the most diverse places in the whole world, and I think it's our responsibility to do everything we can on this earth, in the time that we're here, to try to take one little part of this area, and this unique part we're talking about, and save it for the future. Our family, our kids are working, restarted working on land there, and our kids are working in the business. I've heard great stories about ranchers losing there, and I really emphasize with that, thank you, 30 seconds. But I wanted to ask everybody, I challenge everyone here, when you go get the pillow tonight and go to sleep, think, what is going to be the best way to preserve this land? And I'm not talking about 20 years, 10 years, 50 years, I'm talking about 100, 200 years from now. Is it going to be best saved for the future in the public hands or in the private hands? Everybody think around that.
Thank you. Alan Hart-McArthur, Grace Stalkup, Doug Matheson.
I'm Alan Hart-McArthur, A-L-A-N. I'm a second-generation Oregonian and currently live on property immediately adjacent to current monument in property that would be in the expansion. That's a three-generation family property right now, and we're committed to having our feet in the ground and bringing back 130-year-old homestead to viable, productive land. I want to acknowledge for both commissioners and the group, I really appreciate the respect which the proponents have been shown, excuse me, by those folks, many of whom are here opposing. I thank you for the respect and open listening. There's no point in our finding division, defining common ground. And if we all recognize the stewardship that we all want to bring, both through federal government, through state and local, and private ownership, we end up with a better environment and a better society as a whole, and not a division. Having said that, I do believe that the long-term benefits, the expansion of the monument, for ecological benefit to the highly diverse environment, the access is something that continues to be available, and we're all going to benefit from the expansion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Grace Stalkup, Doug Matheson, Terry Dickey. Doug, why don't you go ahead? Commissioner Mounds must know Grace and says she may have signed up on the law last. Well, so Doug, followed by Terry Dickey and Sarah Means. It's a good thing people have a sense of who's in this room. Doug?
Doug Mounds, right here in Clamath Falls. Sometimes in good rural communities like ours, there can be a temptation to fall for an almost knee-jerk reflex of viewing government as some foreign entity almost invading us, almost an alien force. And I simply want to consciousness and remind us that government is indeed we the people. Every two years, we get to exercise that, and we get to hold accountable. And so I'm pleading with us to resist the reflex to view government as an outside entity and to de-feud it as we the people. When our founding fathers wrote the preamble to the Constitution, and they made the phrase that, "In order to create a more perfect union," that was not a dumb deal, it never is a dumb deal, it's an active, ongoing process. And one of the purposes they then set out in that preamble to the Constitution was to promote the general welfare. And I want to remind us that when they said that, they certainly weren't only thinking of their own generation, they were indeed thinking of future generations. And so if we were to remind ourselves of that today and say, "It is not just me and mine now, it's how will three generations from now, seven generations from now see it?" There will not be a sign on Crater Lake, nor on this wilderness, that says, "Do not enter, no trespassing." It's a matter of preserving and encouraging in our imaginations that our great, 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 great grandchildren can come and enjoy unique places and nature with great biodiversity. This is not a stay-out sign, this is a welcome to great conditions. Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Terry Dickey, Sarah Means, Sally Wells.
My name is Terry Dickey, and I'm the chair of the board of the Friends of the Cascade-Caskew National Monument. The Friends is a nonprofit organization, and we partner with national conservation lands in advocating for and restoring biologically important landscapes and promoting public awareness of biodiversity. We strongly support the science-based expansion of the monument, and we are a voice of the landscape, plants, and animals, and even the insects that describe our environment. Many of our community education participants are surprised by the instances of biodiversity that they can see firsthand in the monument. We have more than 3,500 species of plants and animals that make their home in this monument. For many of our students, families, and adult members who attend our outreach programs, it is a place of discovery and learning to better understand the mountain-building processes that brought together the diverse mix of plants and animals into this one small area of Southern Oregon. It is magical to realize that there are over 130 species of butterflies in the monument, one of the highest concentration of butterflies in North America, but their current habitats are sensitive to environmental degradation. A monument expansion would allow more contiguous wildlife corridors for plants and animals, and even the butterflies, to increase their ranges with fewer barriers. It is important for the onset of climate change engrossing development and increasing population. We urge the Clamath County Commissioners to become an active partner in the monument expansion that can help protect one of the most biologically diverse areas of this planet. The Friends are eager to work with you to build a strong partition and develop outreach programs for all of Clamath and Jackson community residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Means, Sally Wells, Chuck Wells.
Hi, my name is Sarah Means, I'm a private citizen. I'm a daughter of the American Revolution, I believe in the United States. I am very supportive of the science-based Cascade-Caskew National Monument, for personal reasons and also for the people of the United States. My mother died about two years ago, and I had reason to drive back and forth across our country several times, which I had never done. We're living in a time of great degradation, the land has been mauled. The Cascade-Caskew National Monument is one of the few places left that actually has biodiversity. We have lots of monoculture in this country, we have lots of private interests, we need to come together to support these very rare jewels. I've been to national parks, people from all over the world, they come to look at the mountains and the trees and actual pure water, they're surprised by it. They don't have words for it. The photograph over your elected officials is about beauty. This is a 19th century concept, but it still holds. What is a feminine concept but beauty? To appreciate diversity and beauty in our natural places, it's totally rare. You are living in a very unusual area. This weekend, or this week, if you have a free moment, go up there and check it out. It's amazing. I've never taken so many little photographs of the plants. There are hundreds of plants that I would never see in my region where I grew up, in Illinois. I grew up in an oak forest, there were perhaps three original trees left in my entire socialized suburb. You don't want to make more place destroyed. Okay, thanks so much.
Sally Wells, Chuck Wells, George Meyer. So after these three are the last three signed up on this list, we're going to move into the against, but I'm going to go ahead and get through these three. Sally?
I'm Sally Wells, thank you commissioners, and I will save you some time because it was a very articulate and compassionate and wonderful group of people that have spoken ahead of me, I will support everything that they've said. And I'm not a scientist, you don't have to be a scientist to know that we need to protect and preserve everything we can for the future.
Thanks, Sally. Chuck, followed by George Meyer.
Good evening, I'm Chuck Wells. Maybe I've self-known you before. I want to talk about transition. I've lived a long time, and I guess I began, you become aware of transitions back in August 12 of 1937, and so I've witnessed a few of these over time. And when I see the pattern that is set up for how this proposal has been put together, I see an opportunity for everybody to take a look at your position and relation to each other and say, "This is not a dominating thing, this is not the male fist coming down, this is an open procedure." Going to take a lot more talk, and a lot more argument, and maybe understanding talk. But I experienced the northern desert of North Africa, which once was a fertile breadbasket of Rome, and now is a desert. How did that happen? When you start looking at some of the other parts of this world, you begin to realize the immediate interest of somebody maybe got in the way of sitting back and taking a look at it a little longer time. And so I just encourage everybody to take a look at how we're going to be operating as we the people in our community over a certain period of time. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chuck. George Meyer.
Thank you for all seeing this meeting. I'm a Clamath County resident. An expanded National Monument, I think, adding to our area's already bountiful list of special places, including Crater Lake, the Lavalvins, National Wildlife Refugees, and National Wilderness and Forests, should be seen as a valuable add- Wilderness and Forests, should be seen as a valuable asset, helping create a critical mass of attractants appealing perpetuity to outdoor enthusiasts, amateur naturalists, birders, hunters, fishers, as we compete globally for tourist dollars. But more importantly, such wise stewardship decisions as supporting the expansion of this monument prove our desire to conserve our local quality of life, making our area appealing to youthful entrepreneurs, an essential step in utilizing our economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we are going to move into the folks who wanted to come and testify against. We spent approximately an hour and 15 minutes on the supporters, so we're going to give an equal amount of time to those opposing. Remember, you have two minutes. If you are going to repeat something that somebody else has said, please just say, I'm against. Or if you're just feeling a little shy, you can go ahead and say, I'm against, and don't speak. So we're going to start with Ryan Mallory, move into Mike Redd, and then Mike Winters.
Hello, good morning Commissioners, and thank you for calling this meeting. I appreciate the one in Jackson County, too, and a lot of the other things that we noticed I found out about a week and a half ago. Wasn't very public. I drive into this monument and I hike into the first, the original Bill Clancy-Soto Mountain Monument. I'm in the woods three, four times a week. I don't work in the woods. I work online. I'm a computer programmer, designer, and marketing guy. I'm the guy that provided me these maps. I'm an obnoxious guy that's been holding up these signs and putting them all over my car. Those signs were not paid for with logging dollars. Those signs were paid for by me and my friends. Me and my friends spend time in the forest. We are here to save a heritage, a history, a culture, and livelihoods. Those livelihoods, those livelihoods were different 100 years ago. I absolutely agree that there is amazing, unusual flora and fauna in the Siskiyou Cascade Wilderness area. I don't recognize the monument. A monument which we can prove with the first and second expansion, the second expansion beaten by G.W. Bush. So we're all together in this room, whether you're the biodiversity crowd or you're the forest use crowd, we're citizens. All of our presidents have pinned their name to monuments. They've pinned their names to monuments illegally. They've pinned their names to monuments illegally in such a way that it never came down to citizen rule whatsoever or the effects on those people that use those forests. Now, those forests, I love those forests, and I want to show my undergrad kids those forests. And I want to show them how to show their grandkids those forests. I'd like to use Pilot Rock as an example. It's one of the first places that was in the monument area. I drove my grandmother when she was 90, or excuse me, 86, to the base of Pilot Rock and I got her out. And I walked around a little bit with her and she was in awe, and she had never seen it that close. Sorry. I took my, I took my children there too, but I can't now. They do actually close the roads. It's a slippery slope.
Thank you. Mike Redd. Mike Redd, Mike Winters, Rod Owens. And if you're on the deck, go ahead and stand sort of in that general area. It'll make things move a little faster.
Thank you for the top opportunity. I'm Mike Redd. I'm a 40-year resident of Clamath County. I moved here, I live here, I retired here for the outdoor recreation that I enjoy here. Every time we raise the status of, if I really own land, it restricts motorized use of that land, whether it be a snowmobile, an ATV, an elderly person that just wants to go in the woods on a Sunday afternoon drive. The Forest Service has now went with their plan. I fear that by raising the status of this, it's going to limit my access to that area, which I do turkey hunt and deer hunt and elk count in the area. But you cannot do it if you can only walk there and you start getting into your 60s, 70s, and 80s. We need to have motorized access to that land, and snowmobiles especially, that don't do any damage to the land, they go over the snow. But as you raise that, in the Lapa Bed, you cannot ride a snowmobile. In Crater Lake Park, you cannot ride a snowmobile cross-country. And other areas like this, you cannot do it. And I'm feared that by doing this, you're going to limit our access to that area, especially on snowmobiles, in addition to all the other accesses that older people have to use to get into these places. And also, the checkerboarding that has done, that they put on the map, is, leads just to them buying more instead of being a 60,000 acre increase. It's going to be twice that because when you start filling in all the checkerboards, then you take that private property out of private hands and put it in the government that doesn't pay taxes. So that's also a loss to our economy here in Clamath Falls. So I'm opposed to it. Thank you.
John Briggs. And again, if you're on deck, it'd be handy if you would stand over there so you could get there quickly. Mike Winters, Rod Owens, John Briggs.
I'm Mike Winters, retired Jackson County Sheriff and a rancher in the Johnson Prairie area, on the edge of this monument. I'd ask the Commissioners to look at the Antiquities Act and the OMC, compare that, have your county councils. I think there's conflict. I've read through quite a bit, but it appears to me that there's conflict. I don't want to go through much of it because it's already a lot has been said. The process is what really gets me, I got to say. You know, I've heard this we the people stuff a bunch tonight, and it hasn't been we the people. If it was we the people, this room might be a little bit different. There's a lot of people weren't notified. If you go down the list of who was notified, City of Ashland was notified, their chamber, their council, City of Talent, who's a little ashland, their city council was notified, Jackson County Government wasn't, Talent Irrigation, for example, wasn't. Clamath County was a BLM, the Natural Resource Person that's assigned BLM wasn't notified. So many people, so many people weren't notified. This is a backdoor deal that's been tried to get shoved through without any, without a 360 view of the impacts and the input from other people. And so all the we the people folks that are sitting in here, if you truly want it to be we the people, then notify everyone. And let's approach it together and look at the science and look at everything and do it as a team concept, because it is not a team concept right now. It's getting jammed in our throats. It's wrong the way it's being done. I oppose it.
I want to especially thank Tom for his concern about all this. These really went above and beyond the public. And my name's Rod Owens. I'm a Clamath County resident and spent hours and hours and miles and miles of horseback up there this summer. And I've ridden down into Boxo and parts of the monument, not all of it. The star thistle and the weeds are so damn bad down there, the horse don't even want to travel, and they poke them in the legs. The barbed wire strung around the monument is terrible. You got to watch where you ride because you'll get in trouble if you don't. I am. I rode over a big part of the proposed monument area and I see way more wildlife in the proposed area than I do in the monument, which, and I got to say, I haven't been to the monument a lot of times because of the wire and the weeds and the star thistle and all that, which reminds me of the star thistle. About a month ago, I was headed up there, and here's two black bags lying alongside the road, and I couldn't figure out, you know, what the heck it was. So the next day or two that I went back up there, here's them bags again, and I could see the end of it was open. And guess what it was? It was star thistle that somebody had picked over in that area and brought to the Clamath Falls side and lost it off their pickup. I mean, so, you know, that's more governance. So anyway, the next time, I'm going to stop and pick up the bag, which I did. Don't give me that 30 seconds crap. And so I picked up the bag and the second bag was gone. I don't know what happened to it. I'll tell you one thing, it sure wasn't the cattle that brought them bags over the hill to our side of the mountain. Anyway, thank you very much.
Move on faster. John Briggs, Lester Hinton, Patrick Casey, or people are going to miss their opportunity to speak.
Yeah, good evening. Thank you Commissioners for being here. Kelly, and I especially want to thank you for starting out the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. We recognize that this is one nation, is under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We need to keep this land open for all people, not just a few. It is one of my strongest beliefs that most people in this world, not all people, because there's a few lazy idiots out there, but most people want their life to stand for something. There's only two ways to do that. The first way is procreation. Well, obviously, there's been a whole lot of that. The second way is to create a change. And each one of us who wants our life to stand for something, we go out and create change. And I believe that's a lot of what this is all about. Somebody wanting to create change and not really caring about what it is, not really knowing what it is. You hear a few people talking about living in the interior. Yeah, they have a little something to say, but across the nation, we've had enough land grabbed. This is too much. We want to keep this land open for the people, not from the people. We want to be able to use this land. I am a snowmobiler. I groom trails. I run one of the big snowcats. I keep roads and trails open. I get thank yous from tons of people out there. Quick story is, I was ordering a brusher mower, which is one of the big things that, you know, clears out the overgrowth. There were elk hunters up there. One of them went by and he said, wow, now I don't scratch my pickup. He came back two hours later, three hours, whatever it was, and he had a six-point bow in the back of his pickup. He said, hey, I just want to say thanks. You know, let's keep this land open for the people. Let's not close it from the people. If this monument goes through, it'll be, it's going to shut us, many of us out. Thank you.
Casey, Gabby Holliday.
I'm Lester Hinton, I'm a rancher. I've been in Clamath County since 1959. I come here in the Air Force. And I've been over this area many, many times. I run cattle on part of it. There's things we don't need. We don't need this monument. We don't need wolves. And we don't need to take the dams off the Clamath route. Thank you.
Casey, Gabby Holliday, Brian Hanson. Try to move up here faster. We're going to start the clock as you're moving up.
Patrick Casey, born and raised right here, 37 years. This is hunting camp. This is where my kids run. This is where my kids play. That beautiful place behind you? My kids don't. Not everybody can pay to come into your monuments. Not everybody can pay to go into Lapa Beds and enjoy it. We enjoy this. My family enjoys this. You guys want to talk about we the people? We the people are pissed off. How much more are you going to steal from us? 53% of Oregon is owned by the federal government. No more. You know it's wrong. Everybody in this room knows this is wrong.
Larry Redd.
Hi, I'm Gabby Holliday. We are permatees within the expansion areas. I have deep attachment to the land and the plants and animals that live there, and that goes well beyond any financial gain we get from grazing our cattle. Every summer, I look forward to seeing all the wildflowers, the new fawns, the wild horses, elk, and sometimes bear. And I firmly believe that this opportunity should be left available to all. Senator Merkley has stated that the monument's status allows flexibility for how this land can be managed, yet no one seems to have come forth with that plan. So I suppose we have to look at how the present monument is being managed. Let me share with you an example of our monument experience. We had the opportunity to experience a war engulfed fire up close. We saw a lag time as the fire was taken out of control by the locals and handed over to a federal agency with no real knowledge of the area. By this time, with the help of friends, we were able to move most of our cattle out of the direct line of the fire. However, there was little that we could do for the wildlife. We did what we could to assist the firefighters, mostly this consisted of showing the crew's most accessible water sources for their water trucks. Usually, this is a reservoir, which was literally taking water away from our cows in a year where water was in short supply. But without question, putting out that fire, saving wildlife and forests, was the first priority. So when I was standing next to a fire truck and I heard a dispatcher announce over the radio that water from Jenny Creek was not to be used, it was clear that putting out the fire was not everybody's priority.
30 seconds.
And days and weeks in the fall, I saw dead deer, elk, horses burnt beyond recognition and forest land that resembled pictures of the moon. So when I hear the monument people say they want to protect plants, animals, and biodiversity of the area, I really have to bite my tongue. Had the firefighters had access to Jenny Creek from the start, would it have made a difference? I don't know, but the fact is that firefighters couldn't use that resource, and that speaks volumes to the position held by the national monument. Perhaps I am mistaken and their hands were tied by unintended consequences that were a result of Jenny Creek being in land within the monument's status? Please don't tie our hands.
Gabby, stay for one second. We're doing one question, one question only. Brian Hanson, be ready, and Larry Redd.
I have a question.
Nope, not from the audience.
I have a question. Were you, were you notified of this happening in the future, the plant expansion?
I found out through a friend who read it in the paper in Menford.
What was it? What will be the cost to you as a business owner if this goes forward?
I suppose with, everybody talking about how horrible the cattle are, it will be devastating, but they're not clear. They're saying, oh, well, everything will go on as normal, and only the people who've left were people that were bought out. Well, okay, we'll just continue to graze them.
Thank you.
My concerns have been addressed, but I can't wait till the election for that trunk.
Me too. Larry Redd, West French, Romina DeMar.
I'm going to pass because it's being said what I have to say.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So Larry Redd, West French, Lyndon Kearns.
Hi, my name's Larry Redd. I've lived in Clamath County since 1979. First of all, I would like to thank Tom Malins and Jim Belair, not trying to take anything away from the future Commissioners, but for the good fight that you guys have put up the last few years. There's a lot of us that really appreciate what you've done and that agree with most, well, if not all, the decisions that you've made. So thank you for your service. This was a letter that I wrote to most of my representatives, my governmental representatives. Please know that I am not in favor of the Cascade Siskiyou Monument expansion. As a multi-user of taxpayer-owned property, being federal, state, or county-owned, I feel that we have the correct balance between motorized and non-motorized at the current time. My wife and I use these properties in many ways, including backpacking wilderness areas, snowmobiling, hunting, fishing, kayaking, motorboating, riding four-wheelers, woodcutting, and camping, to name a few ways of recreating. My business is also partly based on wood products industry, as most other businesses in southern Oregon either directly or indirectly are. I feel that the loss to some of the ways I use this land to recreate on and the loss to the wood products industry far outweigh any positive things that might come of expanding the monument. One last thing that I'd like to leave you with. If the proposed land is in such good shape right now that they can, that they want to expand it to be in the monument, it must have been pretty good the last 100 years or so the way it's been managed. So why do we need to take it out of the way it's being managed now and expand the monument?
Lyndon Kearns, Bill Cos, CO West.
Hi, everybody. Thanks to the Commissioners for putting this together. I think it's the proper governmental procedure to listen to the people and see what the people really want to do. I'm here representing the Clamath Chamber of Commerce, and we came together last week when we heard about this through, I would call it the grapevine, that this was being proposed. That's wrong to start with. It's not the governmental process. It's not the correct way to allow the citizens of the United States and the local area to make decisions that should be made by those people. So we feel slighted in that department that we were not allowed due process to get ahead of this thing and make our procedures and our ideas. to get ahead of this thing and make our procedures and our ideas known for this proposed monument. With that being said, my letter's already been read. I appreciate that. The Clamath Chamber of Commerce, which represents businesses and individuals in this town, opposes this expansion proposal. Thank you.
And then Richard Lemming.
Hi, I'm Lyndon Kearns. I thank you for dropping to testify here. I've been involved in natural resource production for all my life. Longtime member of Oregon Farm Bureau, the Clamath Lake Farm Bureau. Marred issues that I've heard today, I mean, we've dealt this, this organization for a long time. Me to know Antiquities Act, which originally passed to allow residents to protect small archaeological sites from federal lands that are being looted. This dates back to stuff that happened in the southwest about during the century. But since then, this act has been used in other ways to stop or reduce grazing, logging, and mining on federal lands. As a rancher, I am concerned about ranchers who have grazing allotments in the proposed expansion area. About the current grazing allotment levels, each family rancher may not be able to survive financially. This not only affects local communities, but it, you know, it uses a lot of times family farms to put them out of business. Another thing about grazing is also a management tool that is used to reduce log fire fuel. Grazing along timber production reduces fuel for catastrophic fires. And I've heard people saying they want to protect the plant and wildlife. If you get a big fire through the area, it's gone. Log fires would be disastrous for the plants and animals that this designation supposedly protects. As a member of the Natural Resource Committee, I am deeply concerned that more and more of the natural resources are being locked up in the name of preservation. Utilization of renewable resources not only supports communities economically, but also threatens the environment to plants and animals. For these reasons, I oppose the expansion of the Cascade Siskiyou Monument. Thank you.
Richard Lemming. And then we'll have Sunny Lemming and, or Bill Cos, I'm sorry. Then Richard Lemming, Sunny Lemming.
Yes, I'm Richard Lemming. I've lived in Clamath Falls for 12 years, 40 years, in the Lake Tahoe, in beautiful Sierra Nevada Mountains. Before that, Cleveland. So I'm really giving up a lot to be here, so listen up, okay? I really mostly, I don't think that people in the Clamath Basin want to mar this land. I think the ranchers, the loggers, everyone is environmentally conscious. And I think when this National Monuments Act went in, our society wasn't so environmentally minded. But, so I really object to the using this national monument method of doing this, having it be an executive order, rushing it through on a lame duck president's term. Why don't we just take our time about this? Why don't we have a lot of local input on this matter? Why does it have to be done this way? Already, 47% of the west, western states are owned by the government, and 53% in Oregon. And I understand this is an expansion of more land because it's already under government control. But I think there's a lot of us that would like to see it not be under government control. We feel like the people who live in the area are environmentally conscious enough to be part of the process and for the state to be part of the process. And they give the government, frankly, a lot of us don't trust the government like we used to trust the government. And so, so let's slow this process down. Why does it have to be rushed through? You know, before the end of the year or whatever the time limit is. So that's where I'm at. I think that the people in Clamath County want to preserve this area, and we can do it.
Ray, Rajus, and Aaron Reeves.
Hi there, I'm Sunny. Mary did that guy. Hey, any person who would have any common sense is not going to give something to someone to manage that hasn't been doing a good job with what they have already. And some of the sequestration stuff that happened, guess what? They closed all the national parks. People had reservations, their family vacations, et cetera. They closed the national parks. It was a political stunt. So let's just face it, political expediency trumps all the ideals that we all have. And let's face it, our government is not running in the black. When they start cutting things, which is going to happen, it's just part of, part of financial, you know, reality. When they start cutting back on things, the less-than-stellar forest management practices that we've seen in Oregon are just going to get worse. So I think we need to trust private property owners to be good stewards because it would be foolish not to be a good steward of what you have. So anyway, I'm just, I'm against expanding this monument. I don't have any recreational interest in it, and I don't have any financial interest in it. I just chose to move to Oregon to retire here. And I just think we need to respect private property rights.
Aaron Reeves is going to be next after Linda, and then Dan Ridlett. Linda, are you here? Are you with Linda? Okay. So we're going to move on to Aaron Reeves, and then Dan Ridlett. Is Aaron Reeves here? Are you there? Okay, we're going to move past Aaron. Oh, Linda, okay, go for it.
I oppose the monument. Thank you, Mr. Malums, for getting this meeting going. I was over in Ashland, and I was horrified that none of us were notified. It's something very important. This land is very important to every one of us. Not that we don't believe in conservation, but we do have rights too, and our rights are being taken away right now. So we appreciate having our voices heard in Clamath Falls.
Aaron Reeves. Dan Ridlett.
Thank you, my name's Dan Ridlett. I'm a current resident of the Clamath Basin Seal Growers. I'm also a resident of Clamath County, have been for about 40 years. Our organization categorically opposes this expansion of the monument. I have two questions or two comments I'd like to ask. The first one, I heard a lot of people in support of this proposal stating how well they could do things on their own property. And I really wonder how well their property would be with the government management of their property instead of private management of their property. And my second comment was based on the pillage of our natural resource. And I feel very sorry that a person would think that the Department of Interior's Bureau of Land Management has such a poor ability to manage their resources that it would be considered pillaging our natural resources. And thank you.
Jeff Woodwick, Sharon Martin, Greg Adams. Okay, so, hurry. Come on up. So we're still waiting on Jeff and Sharon. Or, go ahead.
My name's Greg Adams. Lived here most all my life, local business owner. Have an outdoorsman. I hunt and fish in the area. I hunted in the monument before it was a monument and after it was a monument. It's been restricted. You can't get in the same areas, you can't do the same things. I wonder how much more property is going to be taken like this? How much, it turns into a monument, and then is it going to be turned into a park? Are we going to have hunting rights in the park? It just seems like more and more public property is removed from us. And I disagree.
Oh, I'm sorry. Who are you?
Sharon Martin.
Thank you.
Born and raised in Grants Pass, Oregon. My father went there in 1932. I have lived many other places. I'm living in Ashland now. I heard about this monument from Bill Meyer at KMEB. And he loves this country, and I love this country. And he has wonderful common sense. And so I've done a crash course on what's going on. And I am highly opposed to this happening. I don't even understand why we're having this meeting from, that started by Merkley. Because 50,900 acres has been designated by an Act of Congress in 1937. And those are O N C lands. That's 50,900 of this proposed monument. I am tired of that room deal. I hate lawlessness. I want people to be open and honest. And I want we the people to tell the the Washington DC club that this is our land. And Gordon can take care of it, climb.
Dave Holm, Michael Matthews, Ben Edwards. We did skip over, if they are here, Aaron Reeves and Jeff Woodwick. They can come up.
It's Dale Holm. Lifelong, born and raised in Oregon. Listening to all the proponents of this, it would appear that it's beautiful now. It's great. They just want to preserve it, do a little tweaking. And if you believe them, well, hell, let's just make the whole state a park. Come on to me. Because what they suggest, low economic activity, it could have solved all our economic problems. We're all going to have work. We're going to be able to go anywhere we want to go in the state. No restrictions whatsoever. So let's just make it all a park. I'm sure they'll be happy giving up their livelihood and their homes. I don't know how this is going to help our situation in this county in funding our schools, funding our government, or anything else. It's going to take away and take away, and pretty soon, if we're not going to be all one, wear a nice little park ranger outfit, we better go somewhere else. If they have their way, we won't have jobs. Thank you.
Michael Matthews, Ben Edwards.
I would like to thank the commissioners for this meeting. I did hear about it a couple, a few days ago on the radio, so. But anyway, I am opposed to it. I think we've got too much federal government in our lives. And according to what I heard here a while back, the federal government, for every dollar they spend on these public lands, they only get about 75 cents return. And state governments on state lands, they get $6 or $7 back for every dollar they spend. And access the Fremont Wayneema a few years ago. They closed a whole bunch of roads. But it's not posted. It's up to the individual to know which roads open. They got these goofed-up maps that aren't right. And anyway, it's just too much government. And I'm going to say something here, and I'm not for it or against it, but I hope it doesn't offend anybody. We get too much government, are we going to have another Malheur Refuge siege? And I think this is being crammed down our throats without enough input. They've been sneaking around the back door. Thank you.
Sir, what was your name?
Ben Edwards, for Land of Allen.
Thank you. Michael Matthews, also Aaron Reeves, Jeff Woodwick, Bill Cos. I just, people may have left, and that's fine. I just want to, I don't want to miss anyone on purpose. Bill and Don Brown. Are they here? If none of them are wrong, can I fill you? I've been listening all night. Sign up with Sandy, and we'll try to get her to listen. Sir, who are you?
I'm Michael Casey.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. The pronunciation was terrible.
I'd like to thank Commissioner Malums for calling this meeting. And just thank you all for listening. I agree with much of what has been said. I'm strongly opposed to the expansion of this monument. I think it's happened in a slimy way, back door, as we've been hearing. And it isn't even right. They already have a huge area. Looking at this map that's been going around, it's a huge area already. And the inholders that are in there are happy, that's fine. I don't think they need to expand it anymore. Like was said before, the ground that's out there that they're proposing to expand has been doing fine. And there's a lot of good stuff out there. And I don't think it needs to be preserved because the management has been, it's been doing well. Plus, I also agree with the O N C, the O N C lands. It has to stay, it needs to stay. And thank you very much.
Michael Matthews, Bill and Don Brown. Lee Bradshaw?
Bradshaw.
Bradshaw.
Lee Bradshaw. Family's been here since 1856. And currently, we run our cattle on the Dead Indian Plateau. And our total BLM permit is in the proposed monument and some of our private deed to ground. And with this monument going in, it's going to take out a pretty big piece of the pie for our ranch to make a viable unit. And so without our permit up there, we can't operate. And we've got many thousands of dollars invested in our ranch the way it is now. We've been doing lots of irrigation, water development for quality and quantity of water. We just invested about a quarter of a million dollars in that for fish, wildlife habitat. And if they put this in, we lose our BLM permit. We don't have a viable ranch. And our only option then is to buy it up and sell it, I guess. But anyway, thank you very much. I'm opposed.
Brad Luskum?
Brad Luskum, thank you. I'm also a Permian. I think there's been already some talk about it, but some lady was talking about all the rare plants and animals and bugs that we're finding on the monument. I think they've been there for 150 years or maybe thousands of years. They survived the last 100 or 150 years with the logging and the cattle. I think they'll survive another 150. There's a lot of talk about how it does affect private property. It will affect private property and all public property besides. I think the O N C is a very big issue that needs to be, I mean, we've got to have the O N C timber, and we need to use it, not just have it there. We need to use it and have it for the schools. And recreation is there, has been there. What the cows graze, I mean, we're not stopping the people from going out there. There's no reason. Everybody can go use this land all the time. Thank you.
Ray Bullard, Diana Casey, and Jeff Hill.
Hi, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to stand before you and kind of tell my story. So first of all, I want to read to you quickly what was posted in the recommendation letter from May of 2019. from May of two thousand fifteen. This is recommended expansion of the Cascue-Ciscu National Monument. It states, "Climate change in the region is altering the ranges of plants and animals that are the focal points for conservation and in some cases are pushing them outside of the current protected area." So what I wanna tell you is where we run cattle up there, we were actually asked to fence a certain area off for butterflies. So we did that. And every year we would go and we would see cinnamon bears and butterflies and grape plants and animals. Since we've done that, the bears have left. The butterflies, they weren't able to keep them in within the wire fences. I'm not sure. And all of that land is no longer being used to its potential. So the resources that were there are now gone. So that was the first thing I wanted to say. The second thing I wanted to read to you quickly was ending public lands grazing fair and square. This was written by Andy Kerr. And it says basically that the conservationists are increasing their attention on livestock grazing and the conflicts within the recreationists are causing on these lands. So while they say that they want grazing and they want the other things, they do not. So lastly, the national monument decree is an important tool for fast track conservation measures and bypassing bickering that often have more to do with politics and practical sense. So I ask the commissioners to use support bypassing politics and practical sense. I don't support the expansion. Thank you.
So my name is Diana Casey. I am the mother of three nine-year-old boys. I was born and raised in Clement Falls and I have been in this playground my whole life. I look at the seal of Clement County and I see geese, I see logging, I see potatoes and I see cattle. What's gonna happen when our government comes in and takes all of our playground from us? What's gonna happen when they come in and take all of our farming land, all of the grazing land and everything like that that our county, our community needs as a whole? Ultimately, I cannot raise my three-year-old boys the way I was raised to go out and play and hunt and use the land as needed. I have to worry about what road I'm going to go down, whether I can bring my dirt mite or my quad. I have to worry about where I'm hunting, what I'm hunting and who I'm paying to hunt. I can't understand why our government wants to come in and make all of these rules and regulations and set up these boundaries for everybody who could potentially either go out and profit, like the cattle ranchers, the farmers and such. I also don't understand why they don't wanna stop people from going out and using this as a plate land. I get the fact that these people have monuments, they have parks and things like that. But you know, to be honest, I don't particularly feel like paying at least thirty-five dollars to go drive it down a good road. I can't take my kids to Crater Lake without paying fifty dollars. And to me, that's unreasonable, it's unlogical and it's just absolutely unnecessary. So thank you.
My name is Jeff Hill and I'm a resident of Chillicothe. And I haven't been here for a long time, but I have heard some things tonight that kinda got me out a little bit, so I'd like to make a few points. First off, I don't know if the public is aware of this, but everybody's pointing at that picture of both the commissioners. I would like for you to know that the laws of Oregon have no power in that place, only the federal government of the United States. Okay? If they take our, this national monument and make it a park, the people of Oregon will not have a seat there, only the federal government of the United States. The second thing is Phil talked about constitution. Okay? He said, he talked about promoting the general welfare. That's true. Okay? I would like to remind him that the Tenth Amendment says, "Power is not delegated by this constitution to the United States Congress or reserved to the states, respectively in the people," not people in D.C. Okay? So legislative powers creating any parts of Indian lands is to be done by Congress, not by the president. He does not have that power. Finally, in a separate point, they talk about how good this is and how nothing's gonna change. So if nothing changes, they're not accomplishing anything. They're simply creating the power for the federal government. Thank you.
Before we move into test, did anyone sign up to testify for the position? Okay. So I wanna return to, did Grace Stollcutt come back? Did she want, okay? Also Aaron Reeves, Jeff Woodwick, Michael Matthews or Bill and Don Brown? Any of those folks? Okay. Thank you for all who signed up to give comments to this board. We certainly appreciate it. I'm amazed that we're done in a reasonable hour. Yes?
Can this be wait, give one more comment?
I'll do one more and that's it. So come on up.
Sorry, everyone, I wasn't prepared to say anything tonight, but one point I didn't really hear come up, and that is, everybody is saying that nothing will change as far as access goes to the monument, but I think a lot of people are forgetting that all those roads were built and maintained with dollars primarily from the funding of logging. And you're gonna put this monument in there and get rid of the logging and the B L M claims that they're already short-staffed and under budgeted. So I don't really know where the B L M's gonna come up with the money to actually keep these roads that they claim they're gonna keep open, open.
We keep them open.
Yeah.
Thank you to everyone who joined us this evening. I mentioned in the beginning that we weren't going to formally deliberate. However, if my colleagues would like to spend, now it's time for the board. If my colleagues would like to spend some time, did we miss you on the list?
Yes. Yep. Who signed up for pro?
Okay. What were the names? Have the comments that you were gonna make already been sent?
No.
Okay. So how many up there are you? Two? Okay. Those are, honestly, those are the last two. Nobody else asked. Then you're gonna make me feel bad because I said no.
My name is Lynda DeWitt and I live east of Grizzly Peak. And we're at the headwaters of a watershed that runs into Bear Creek down through Ashland. And we have four hundred and forty-five acres. Half that is a wetland that's fed by springs. We've been cattle grazing for a hundred and fifty years on that land. And about ten years ago, with overrun cattle, the wetlands degraded enough that the land was as dry as the West Hills. We excluded cattle and we now have a restored wetland. The water was running off, just gushing off. There was no longer sponge in the meadow. There's a place for cows and there's a place for not having cows. So our watersheds are critical. And we've had a restoration effort and we would like to be surrounded by management that's geared to restoration. The cow grazes can be managed, but they don't need to be on the headwaters of our watersheds. Clean water is really critical. We now have western pond trails returning to our pond because there's a perennial spring there now. So I believe in management and ecological timber harvest and all of this because we only have one set of land around here. And I have not seen any difficulties of private landowners managing their land. And I'd like to be surrounded by a similar land management plan. I support the expansion of the monument.
Thank you. Okay. Who was the person who gets the proverbial last word? I guess that would be, that's it. I said one more. They said they signed up. I made a trust you that I don't have.
We did. There were quite a few, four people who signed up and ended up leaving. We've been sitting the whole time. So my name is Suzanne Willow. I'm the owner of Willow and Ridge Ranch. This is a four hundred and forty-five acre ranch and farm that has been farming consistently since nineteen twenty. The only farming that happened for a number of years was cattle run on it without any, with no one living there and no one taking care of the cattle, basically. So in addition to having this seventy-six acres of wetland restoration, which is now restoring quite well, we also are a very big, for us, timber producer. So we have two hundred and fifty acres in timber. And we manage our timber actively, which is to say, we are careful to take out the trees that need to be taken out. Our timber over the last thirty-one years has improved both in stand and in diversity. And our water has improved both in about two feet of our water table has returned. So we actually have significantly more water going into the T I D where a lot goes. And we are actively managing our land and we feel like being part of the monument would actually assist us in managing that land well. And we'd like the area around us to be managed well too. Thank you.
So we're now gonna spend some time as a board, having the opportunity for some discussion. Again, I wouldn't refer to this as deliberation, but more of an opportunity to discuss. However, before we do that, I do wanna mention that if folks have additional comments they'd like to get to the board, feel free to email us. Our email address is B O C C at Clement County dot org. Additionally, I believe Merkley's office is still taking public comment. For folks who don't like to email, you're also welcome to call us. Our number is five four one eight eight three five one zero zero. Again, that's five four one eight eight three five one zero zero or B O C C at Clement County dot org. With that, you could spend the next, you know, maybe fifteen, fifteen, twenty minutes having some discussion if my colleagues would like to do that.
Yeah. First off, I wanted, I had a number of people email me or call me and said they just could not get your, I'm just saying their names on both sides so that they are on the record of making comments. You will have these in paper form. Also, on the pro side, I had a letter from Chris Power from Ashland and also Alan Jerme, Jeanette, he's a PhD from Jacksonville. On the opposing side, Lee and Linda Steelwell, they sent me a letter also in opposition. Alan Everline, Pat Lundie, Charles and Tashin Paulson, Neil Everline, John Turner, Bruce, Virginia, Brandon and Susan Tottenham, retired Captain William Simpson, Harry Hampson, Terrence Peckhart and Kay Doolan. Those were the emails that I got first for you. I don't know if anybody else got any.
I received those as well.
Okay. Yeah, I also received those same ones. Okay. I'm, I'm, I'll start off the conversation, I guess. I've always been pretty vocal about the issues that I believe the citizens are passionate about and I'm passionate about. There are a lot of passionate issues dealing with Clement County, it seems like, I mean, a lot of them. But I think the people in general, I hate to say this, but I think sometimes some sets of our population get used to being trampled on by, whether it's state or federal. County government never does that, I'm sure. Maybe I should leave it there. But I think when things like this come up, it raises the hackles on everybody's back. I know it does mine. And it really disturbs me to a tremendous degree. My thing has always been about balance. I believe in compromise, I don't believe in surrender. And that's what we've been asked and demanded to do time after time after time after time. And I wanna look at all the things, all the comments we've had, the pros and the cons. I think we need to, as elected people and I think as citizens, we need to do that. And we need to weigh the pros and the cons and then look at the history. Look at where we're going as a community, as a state, as a nation, and then really do some real soul searching. What's the best direction you think is right for us as Clement County citizens? I don't think there's balance here at all. I think the balance has been tipped the other direction for decades and decades. That's one of the reasons I got involved in, I never thought I'd get in politics as such, but I started in some of the other natural resources issues and it just kinda grew there. But I think our citizens right here are fighters. We believe in what we're fighting for and we believe in what's right and wrong. That doesn't necessarily mean that everybody's right all the time either, because we have both sides in that, of this issue here in this county and in Jackson County also and in Siskiyou County. But I think the, I'm not gonna make any determination, but we're gonna have to do some deliberating. And I don't know when we're gonna do that specifically, but I think it's great that people have turned out en masse in three different meetings. I'm not sure how many people we had here tonight, but it was overflow, overflow is what we had here. And I'm just hoping that the fire marshal hasn't come by tonight. I guess Cherry gets to pay the fine though. Or the next board of commissioners, maybe. No. But anyways, I think I'm glad, I am absolutely thrilled to see people actively involved. I'm only gonna be a commissioner a couple more months, but I'm gonna still be involved in things. And I am just thrilled to see people getting involved. I think that's where we need to be as a community. We need to be involved, we need to be actively involved and proactively involved. Can we solve all the world's problems or even the state's problems here? No, we can't. But if we don't try, it's going to get worse and worse. And it might get worse and worse even when we try and do our best. But we have to try. Our founding fathers, that was our guiding principles and I truly believe in that concept. And I think we need to keep forcing our government to do the right things. We have to help be their conscience. And I'm gonna make a comment here that probably will give me a little bit of, everyone's gonna have a thought that I have a predetermined outlook on this and maybe correctly so. I think whether this goes forward or not, when our federal legislators come here to visit with us in town hall meetings, I hope you let them know what you think on both sides of this. Thank the ones you agree with and make them be accountable for the other side. Anyway, thank you so much for being here. I really appreciate it.
I appreciate everybody coming tonight too. Unfortunately, we didn't have quite figure enough room to get everybody in. We thought about switching the site out to the fairgrounds at the last minute and we thought, well, that's not gonna work. We'll just see how many show up. If we have to have another town hall, we'll have another town hall. But I do appreciate everybody that showed up. Unfortunately, there was standing room only, I think, but I think everybody that got a chance, that wanted to talk had a chance to talk. I was kinda keeping track of how it was going and I think there was about twenty-seven people that were for the expansion. And there was one elected official that testified for the expansion. The people that were opposed to it, I counted about twenty-five that were opposed, but the elected officials really outweighed the other elected official by eleven to one. I also received the emails that Commissioner Mallens and Commissioner Morris received and it seemed like it was about a ten to one ratio going for the opposed to this. So, but you know, it's nice to hear from the ones that are for it and the reason that they are for it. I have some definite reservations about the expansion and it had been mentioned already and that is the O N C lands. The O N C lands is a contract with the county for production of revenue for the counties. And that has been in existence for an awful long time. That is a contract with the county by the federal government and I think that presidents can probably have some definite problems with expanding that. As you might know, the counties in the state of Oregon are not opposed to suing the federal government or the state, or the state government if they start messing with us. And I would hate to see the counties have to sue the federal government over this. As you know, the people that run the O N C counties, which Commissioner Morris sits on that board, that they are very opposed to this for the reasons that I just mentioned. And I think that that would probably end up in some type of suit. We don't need to go there. You know, that's ridiculous to have to deal with litigation against the federal government in order to get something done that's right. And... And we don't want to go there, all it does is cost everybody money. So we'll see how that goes. I think that in Clamath County, I hope that the people that, from the federal side decide, oh, well, we don't want to deal with Clamath County, we'll pull every, all the land to the other side and deal with Jackson County, but I, that's, the majority is in Jackson County. Clamath County has, oh, I don't know how many, 19,000 acres or something like that and so the majority of it is over there. I think that the federal government representative from Senator Merkley's office is sitting in the back. I'm sure that Senator Merkley is going to hear exactly what we think about the situation. She did hear from people that are definitely supporting this and she will take that back to the senator also, but I think that she knows that there's problems with the ONC Act and any of the lands, especially those lands are definitely going to have to come out of this expansion. You look at the map and it's a checkerboard and some people testified to the fact that it's a checkerboard, which is kind of ridiculous. You look at this map or this beautiful picture, as we talked about earlier today, that's a big square and it makes it a lot easier to manage. You manage checkerboards like this and it makes it a tough deal, especially when you're dealing with landowners that are landlocked inside of there that actually don't, there's a, if you ever owned a piece of property where, where all your access onto another piece of property was just a pin because that's the corner and there's really no access into that land, you know, maybe they'll give you an easement, but there's some checkerboards here that actually are just a corner of a landlocked piece of property without an easement to get into that piece of property. So there's, there's some definitely issues that I think that they need to deal with. I think that they've thrown this together rapidly and I think that the coordination, we talked about coordination between the federal government, state of Oregon and local jurisdictions and there's been absolutely no coordination by the federal government with Clamath County. And I appreciate everybody that brought that, that up and I think that it's definitely a problem. The federal government is supposed to coordinate with the county right from the very beginning and this was pretty much a backdoor deal. When I heard about it, it was just a short period of time ago and this board decided we needed to do something and do something fairly rapidly and that's why we called this meeting today. And I'll stop there. We haven't made any decisions, but you, I didn't know somewhere where I'm headed because of the fact that I worry about these ONC lands. And I'll leave it to there for the commissioner that's on the ONC board.
Thank you. I will keep my comments brief. I look forward to having some more time to really reflect on what we heard here this evening and I certainly appreciate everyone that came out, that spoke their mind and everybody really was so very respectful, which I really, I think this was a good evening here, so I hope you enjoyed being here. As the commissioner mentioned, I do sit on the board of directors for the ONC lands. I am concerned about the legality of this proposal. And additionally, though, I'm, I'm a big hiker, I love to be outdoors. I mean, anyone who knows me knows I'm, I'm out there all the time, so to those who talk about how beautiful this and unique and special this part of the state is, I can certainly appreciate that. I'm grateful for that. In fact, my, my husband is what they call an ultra marathoner. He goes out and runs 50, 60, 100 miles, so between the two of us, we spend a lot of time in the woods and I appreciate all the beauty that Oregon offers. And I'm the granddaughter of a rancher, so there you have it. There's a lot to consider here. I guess what it comes down to for me as I reflect is, is that we, we certainly, as you can, you can tell by the passion in both sides that talk about this issue, as a country to, to be candid, I mean, we need to have some really serious conversations about public lands. And I'm concerned to make any dramatic changes or do anything quickly until we have some more and perhaps some better conversations about that. I think things are just too, things, things are kind of scary right now in that respect and, and so I'm, I'm concerned and I'm nervous about doing anything quickly in that direction until we come together a little more and perhaps find a little bit of a middle ground and I don't know the answer, but I want some more time to reflect. I'm glad we were able to have this evening. I know Commissioner Malins never lets me adjourn before he says one last thing, so I'm going to look over at him and make sure he doesn't have one last comment.
That was a real pencil edge. No, I think there's been a big effort to paint a picture that we need to get along, we need to collaborate, we need to be able to work with, across the aisles, compromise and I think we do all that. I think we really do all that. But in all reality, I mean, look down in our history, how has that been working out for Southern Oregon so far? It's a, it's a pitiful sight for every time you go to work with the U N D C or say to them, compromise. I'm waiting for the gavel. You know, I, I, I think we have to take a strong stand. I agree, we need to collaborate and we need to compromise, but it has to be, again, my big thing is balance and that does not exist right now. It just does not exist. Do I mean, do I, we need to do something drastic? I'm not advocating for that, but we have to stand our ground sometimes and we have to make a choice, is that now? Has it gone too past, too far past that or do we need to do some more negotiating or whatever? That's, that's, that's where my big issue is, I think. I have my very strong personal views on that and it's not necessarily agreed to on a lot of the citizens of Clamath County. And that's fine. I have my position and I will stick by my position.
So a couple of notes as we wrap up. Again, reminder, if you have additional comments, questions, concerns, feelings, please email us, you are welcome to call us. We will most likely do what I would call deliberations during our meetings next week. All our meetings are public, but likely our Tuesday morning meeting, 9 o'clock will most likely be the time, but if you really want to know, touch base with our office, they'll, they'll know. Once we decide when that's going to happen, they'll know and you can find out. Thank you everyone for coming, travel home safely.